Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the work sessions for September eighth. As carry, please silence your cell phones. Please stand in the public.
My allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. To be the law for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just for liberty and justice for all.
This time I'll ask for a moment of silent reflection, please. Thank you very much. Uh, agenda approval, I need to add an executive session for personnel matter at the end of the meeting with no, um, action being taken. And I know Councilwoman Wexler, you had, you wanted to add something here?
Uh, yes, if I could please, um, it would be, um, a motion to submit out for a bid, senior center bathrooms and kitchen.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. I can motion approve the agenda as amended?
Subdued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I. Uh, approval of the meeting minutes, a regular town board meeting on August twenty fifth?
I review them.
I think the motion approval is written.
Second.
Good motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
I. Opposed. Motion carried, abstract of claims.
We have, uh, we have a correction from August twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five. I move to approve the regular abstract of claims two five zero dash zero two one four one through two five dash zero two two seven one. Recommend total payment in the amount of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighteen cents. And a post cop payment in the amount of two thousand, thirty-one dollars and sixty cents. Corrections from eight twenty-five twenty-five voucher, number two five zero zero seven one three, in the amount of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and fifteen cents. Van Orlo Ford was not previously included. So that is the correction.
For a motion? That's a motion.
Second.
Good motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
I. Opposed. Motion carried.
We offer nine eight, two thousand and twenty-five. I need to approve the regular abstract of claims two five dash zero two two seven two through two five dash two three eight three. Recommend total payment in the amount of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-nine cents. And a post cop payment in the amount of eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-five cents. And that's also a motion.
Second.
Good motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
I. Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, department head statements. Bridgette, anything from the clerk's office?
No.
Chief, uh, chief, I was calling captain, sorry.
I'm sorry. Uh, just the item on here, jump over.
Okay. Tim, anything?
No.
Amy?
Amy?
Yeah.
Jackie, you're on the agenda. Uh, Phil Conrad, anything?
Nothing.
Mike, anything?
Nothing right now.
Jeff, anything?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Engineering is, uh, excuse Bob Lamon to use. Um, he has the topographical study for Morgan Farms subdivision. Um, they have pretty much finished the documentation and they're planning for to meet with myself and Tim Masters and probably Rob Oriell or another board member, um, to go over it. And, uh, hopefully get some information ready for the next meeting, so.
Yeah, copy, yeah.
Yeah.
Is lunch, no, after you guys are done with the meetings, that can be available for review?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me see. Anybody else? Tim Smith's got something tonight and the window was off today, so, um, I think that's it. Um, all pending business, there's none new business, um, under my liaison report. Um, this past year, we negotiated a contract with the volunteer firemen, which we have approved and moved forward on that. As part of that negotiation, um, we negotiated a, uh, increase to their low sap from seven hundred dollars to a thousand. That's per year, per fireman, and that goes into like a savings account. They have to do so many years, I think they have to be vested after five years and then they get it at retirement to set up to, um, recruit.
And retain.
Firemen and retain firemen, um, which is a major problem in the fire departments, our volunteer fire departments. So, uh, Al, if you want to touch base on exactly what that entails, I have the resolution here.
Certainly, I'll read that into the record for you. Because this is a distribution of, of public funds, it requires a mandatory referendum, meaning a vote of the public after, uh, the referendum, um, is published. Um, the clerk has been contacted and knows what she's responsible to do. I've also reached out to the Board of Elections, who has agreed to help us with that election and any, uh, having inspectors, et cetera, be here, they're, they're willing to do whatever it takes. Uh, the resolution, uh, calls for an election on October fifteenth between the hours of twelve and eight P M. Um, uh, we are going to, again, read this into the record, do a roll call vote on it. And again, what it does is it increases that contribution from the town, uh, for all eligible, um, firefighters, uh, from seven hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. And again, the vote is necessary in order for it to be effective. It takes effect January first, two thousand twenty-six.
Yeah. And I just want to mention the state increased, uh, the low sap contribution to twelve hundred dollars and the fireman only answers for a thousand.
That's correct. So I'll read this into the record. Resolution, contribution to service award program. Resolution authorizing the town board of the town of Lewiston, county of Niagara and state of New York to increase the maximum financial contribution regarding the, quote, town of Lewiston defined contribution service award program, end quote. Defined contribution plan service award program to increase the town of Lewiston service award contribution from seven hundred dollars per year, per vested member, to one thousand dollars per year without any additional modification to the existing service award program. Be resolved by the town board of the town of Lewiston, county of Niagara, state of New York as follows. Section one, the Lewiston Fire Company Number Two Incorporated, the Upper Mountain Fire Company of Lewiston, New York Incorporated, and the Sanborn Fire Company Incorporated, here and after referred to collectively as the Town of Lewiston Volunteer Fire Companies. Provide fire protection within the town of Lewiston. Section two, the town board of the town of Lewiston pursuant to article eleven A of the general municipal law, after a mandatory referendum established the fire protection district volunteer fire services award program currently modified and known as the Town of Lewiston Defined Contribution Service Award Program. Quote, the plan, with an effective date of the plan of January one, nineteen ninety. Section three, the planned document of the Town of Lewiston Defined Contribution Service Award Program is incorporated herein by reference and made part hereof, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk of the town of Lewiston and in the office of the Sanborn Fire Company Incorporated. Section four, the plan was established for the volunteer firefighters of the Town of Lewiston Volunteer Fire Companies noted above in section one, under a defined contribution plan, as that term is defined in the general municipal law, section two eighteen. Section five, the Town of Lewiston Fire Companies and the Town of Lewiston have retained and used the services of first security benefit dash V F D service award program to assist in the administration of the Town of Lewiston Defined Contribution Services Award Program. And as the bo, as the below cost analysis was prepared internally, there is, oh, I'm sorry, there was no cost associated with its preparation. Question of adoption of this resolution was duly put to a vote on roll call, which resulted as follows, and then we just call it. Did I miss something? I don't, oh, I apologize, thank you. Section six, I knew this was a little short. Section six, in order to increase participation and encourage active volunteer membership in the Town of Lewiston Volunteer Fire Companies, the town board of the Town of Lewiston has determined that it is necessary to add advisable to increase the contribution to the Town of Lewiston Defined Contribution Services Award Program from seven hundred dollars per year to one thousand dollars per year for each eligible, eligible vested member. Section seven, that for years two thousand six and beyond, there will be a cost associated with said contribution to the Town of Lewiston Defined Contribution Services Award Program as amended as follows. And there's a col, there's a, uh, a chart here which indicates the first, uh, column saying number of eligible vested firefighters is seventy-one. The prior contribution per vested firefighter was seven hundred dollars. The new contribution is one thousand dollars and the total annual cost of the new contribution is seventy-one thousand dollars. And the proposed increase in cost from, uh, the prior contribution to the new contribution is twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Further, the projected annual future cost of the amended services award program is expected to remain constant, fluctuating, fluctuating only upon the average number of eligible vested members. Further, the projected annual future cost, oh, I'm sorry, that's a duplicate, that paragraph can be, uh, stricken there. Section eight, after the plan is amended, there will be no further administrative fee other than the annual cost of administration of the plan. Section nine, this amendment will be effective if passed on January one, two thousand six. Section ten.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, I'm sorry. Section ten, the resolution is subject to a mandatory referendum and, and before becoming effective, must be approved at a special election of the qualified electors of the town of Lewiston at the Town of Lewiston Town Hall, thirteen seventy-five Ridge Road, Lewiston, New York, one four oh nine two, on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five between the hours of twelve P M and eight P M. The clerk of the town of Lewiston is hereby authorized and directed to make all necessary arrangements with the Niagara County Board of Elections and to prepare ballots in substantially the following form. The Town of Lewiston, I'm sorry, the town board of the Town of Lewiston, New York hereby adopts the following. Resolution authorizing the Town of Lewiston, county of Niagara and state of New York to increase the maximum contribution to the Town of Lewiston Defined Contribution Services Award Program, Defined Contribution Plan Services Award Program from seven hundred per year to one thousand dollars per year, per eligible vested volunteer firefighter. And this hereby approved, and again, I'm sorry, I skipped that page. The question of adoption of the resolution, uh, was duly put to a vote on roll call, which resulted as follows, and now we can do the roll call vote. Thank you.
So we need a motion, correct?
Yep.
I'll make the motions.
Second. Um, just a point of verification, just, um, for my understanding of it. So, um, since it's on October fifteenth, is this to be just voted on here at town hall?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's.
Unless you're on more than one polling site, but given the nature of the, the subject, uh, and the hours that it's open, the town hall seems to me to be the, the, the primary place to hold it.
Okay, okay, and then just another point of clarification as far as there is an expense to hold the, um, October fifteenth election or special.
I would assume that there are going to be some clerical expenses, namely printing of the ballots, um, hiring the, uh, inspectors.
Yes.
Um, you'll have to have someone here, uh, the volunteers have to be paid who man the election. It will be a paper ballot, um, so we will have to determine, you know, uh, I'm not sure that you need to do that now, but, but certainly where that, those monies are going to come from.
Uh, Lewiston one wasn't included on this, was it?
That's correct. Lewiston one, this is a defined contribution plan, meaning that the municipality contributes a fixed amount every year to their program. Uh, Lewiston number one is a defined benefits plan, uh, and they, what complicates, uh, Lewiston number one is that the village also participates in funding their program. Uh, the town of Lewiston, um, through my office has contacted Lewiston one. I've prepared, in the case we want to, a resolution that would be effective for them, but the town, um, the fire company and the village are going to enter into some discussions over the next couple of weeks. And if appropriate, we could put that on the, the agenda for our next meeting, still within time for the October fifteenth election.
I want to clarify my, my resolution. Um, the number actually is, proposed increase in cost is twenty-one thousand, three hundred. We have twenty-one thousand, five hundred, so.
I apologize.
That's okay, twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. Well, I'll make the motion as presented. And, well, uh, Johnson, oh, can I have a second?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Councilman Jacobi?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Councilman Oriell?
Yes.
Councilman Myers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wexler?
Yes.
Supervisor Broderick?
Yes.
Steve, I would like to, uh, say it very quickly. Um, I was talking to a guy who's done with fire companies for a long, long time. He's approaching that age when he's going to go. This means a lot to me, you know, to somehow convince younger people that they get on board early, you know, it'll mean quite a substantial thing to them when they leave the fire company. Something I would do with it.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Supervisor, I will provide the clerk with a, a corrected version, taking that paragraph out and correcting that one number.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So in the previous board meeting, we hired, we approved the hiring of Wendell to do a comprehensive plan. Um, and the first step is making a comprehensive plan committee, which I've worked on. I talked to Councilwoman Wexler, who, um, volunteered that night to be on the committee. Um, I've worked with Tim Masters and, um, I want to make a motion or a, a resolution to an ad.
An ad hoc committee.
An ad hoc committee for the, um, Town of Lewiston Comprehensive Plan, um, that would include the following individuals. Um, from the, from the public, it would be Steve Lyle, who's a frequent member at our meetings, Jennifer Pauli, who is the former director of, uh, Chamber of Commerce, Henry Sandinato, who's a retired D E C engineer, um, Mark, Dr. Mark Gallo from Niagara University, um, Tim Masters, our building inspector, Ed Zimmerman, our building inspector, um, our representative from the board, Sarah Wexler, and myself, town supervisor. And as of now, that's all I have to put on it. Um, I have been looking at one other person from Tim Masters' recommendation, a trampy farmer on that committee. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of farmers anymore, um, a lot of retired, so we've reached out to a retired farmer who may have the time, uh, for probably being, uh, five meetings, once a month, or a couple of hours, to work with Wendell on that plan. So I would, uh, make that motion to include creating it, the ad hoc committee, and putting those individuals on that committee.
I'll second that.
Motion of second. Any questions? Counselor? Yeah.
I appreciate you reaching out and giving a heads up on these people. Um, I've spoken with a couple of these people who really were anxious to do it and, uh, looks like we're good committee. Thank you.
Were you planning on, on appointing a, a chair and a secretary?
Um, yeah.
That afterwards?
Yeah.
Certainly. I have one thing to add to that.
Okay.
That's all I was going to.
So we have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
I. Opposed. Motion carried. I just want to say one thing. Um, I've, I've talked with Tim a lot. Um, I've tried to get a diverse group of people. We have some Lower River Road people, we have some Sanborn people, we have Ridge Road people, um, and if we get another farmer, he's out in the, in the Sanborn ransom mill area, uh, that we've, we've approached. Um, so I'm, I'm real happy with the variety of individuals we've gotten and hopefully we come up with a good, um, comprehensive plan. Go ahead.
So I was going to suggest, uh, as we discussed, um, appointing a chair, number one, and a secretary because their obligation is going to require that notes and minutes be taken. Um, but also just for the record, um, that this ad hoc committee's purpose expires once, and, and so does the committee, once the new comprehensive plan is adopted.
Okay.
That's all.
So, um, I would like to make a motion to name Henry Sandinato as chairman and Jennifer Pauli as the secretary.
I'll second that.
Anybody have a question? All in favor?
No, I just want to make sure that she is okay. Might be a miss.
I spoke with her. Yes. And I know Jennifer takes really good notes.
Okay.
It's not, you know, so I, I did reach, I did reach out to her, so. All in favor?
Aye.
I. Opposed. Motion carried. And I know Tim Masters is probably the happiest individual with this moving forward, so. Um, excellent. Our, uh, the reappointment of our town assessor. So, um, I would make a motion to reappoint Nick Fucow as our town, uh, assessor effective ten, one, twenty-five. Is it, is it a reappointment every year?
I believe so.
Is it?
I'm not sure if it's every year, it'll be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's two years.
It just has, it just has the, the effective date, it doesn't give us a ending date, so. I would, I would make the motion for Fucow, effective ten, one, twenty-five, as our continued assessor of town.
It's subject to town code, and the woman has to reappoint.
Yeah. Second. Motion of second. Anybody got any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I. Opposed. Motion carried. Moving on to legal, um, I don't think you have anything else.
I don't have anything else other than that. Um, I've, I've, uh, been communicating with the board on various legal issues that are going on with the town, I'll just continue to do that.
Uh, engineering, I already spoke about Bob not being here and the, uh, the study that we've done for Morgan Farms, budget revision.
Previously, I submitted two budget revisions for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five into your board packets, and tonight I ask for approval to process them.
I review them with Jackie on Friday. I'll make a motion to accept the budget revisions. Second. Motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
I. Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Jacobi?
And I have one on my agenda. Um, the chief is still, he would like to hire a parrot and, uh, officer named Andrew Devantier. He'll be paid according to the contract, and he will start work on September twenty-seventh. And that's a vote.
Motion of second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I. Opposed. Motion carried.
What's up, chief?
Thank you. Councilman Oriell?
Yes. The water department about a month ago contacted me about having new lights put on our building where the water tank is, it's a little maintenance building there. Or, hopefully called the water building, I guess, sound here as. And, uh, I get ahold of Denny Warren at Wildon. Um, they have a program where national grid pays seventy percent, town pays thirty. So we went down there and gave an estimate to Matt, uh, Jeff from the water department, and we come up with a total cost of the new lights there and put a couple of wall packs on the outside of twenty-four hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-five cents. National grid's paying seventeen hundred and forty dollars and fifty-two cents. Our contribution, which we will probably pay one lump sum, six hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-four cents. So it's a motion to, okay, the replacement of the lights.
Welcome. You know, we have a lot of our, our energy.
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Each and every.
Second.
Sounds like a pretty good deal to me.
Yeah. He likes me. Yeah. Well, we have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
I. Opposed. Motion carried.
Um, do you, if, do you need a motion for Steve to sign a contract or no?
No. You know? Yeah. Yeah, actually.
Thank you.
Second. Second half.
Okay, what, so you can make it on second?
I'll make a motion for the supervisor to sign the contract.
I'll second.
Motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
We have a, uh, the second thing on my agenda is we have a building outside here for scoring the lawn mowers, gas cans, it's lived its life. And, uh, we went out the bid for a new town hall storage building. We got four bids in, but only one was a qualifying bid. Everything we asked for in the bid deck. It's for forty-four thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. It's from B and L Construction Supply. Building business as park road buildings. So I make a motion that we accept their bid on the forty-four thousand, tight one.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I. Opposed. Motion carried. That's all I got.
One thing from that will come from the H ninety-seven?
Okay. Should we include it as part of the motion? Give it to you.
Yeah. It doesn't hurt.
Amendment motion.
Yeah, the motion, uh, money comes from the H ninety-seven on, on the building. That's a, that's a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I. Opposed. Motion carried.
That's all I got.
Okay. Councilman Myers?
Said a couple of correspondence from the Sanborn Historic Home and Farm Museum. They have a country breakfast fundraiser coming up on Sunday, September fourteenth, from eight to twelve, the farm museum, uh, country breakfast with all the fixings, uh, still the same price of ten dollars per, uh, feed. It's under six or three, and seven and over five dollars. And then, uh, on September, Tuesday, September twenty-third, they have their regular meeting, um, with special speaker series entitled minimizing the effects of aging. And Richard Durwell.
Hold it there.
I'll second.
He started the largest senior fitness program in New York State.
What date was that?
I'm sorry. That's on Tuesday, September twenty-third at seven P M. And refreshments are served.
Okay. Councilwoman Wexler?
Yes. Um, I would just like to, um, first explain, uh, what I'd like to make a motion on is, uh, we're looking at redoing both the bathrooms at the senior center and then also the kitchen. Currently, the senior sen, senior center bathrooms are kind of yipping on the A D A compliance, and they just need to be redone. I think they've lived their lives, as well as the kitchen, the kitchen, um, floor is kind of failing as far as you can see where it's cracking and stuff. And then also they have a large commercial stove that's a little bit of a hazard, and it's a little bit too big to manage. And so, if anybody is interested in looking at the scope of work that was put together and so generously as a reminder that offered his time to, um, help me through the process, please get with me after, uh, the meeting, or I can also discuss it here. But I would like to make a motion, uh, to be able to submit for bid renovations on the senior center of bathrooms and kitchen. And I'm hoping to have that finalized and out for bid next week.
That's a motion.
That would be a motion.
Circle that.
With a motion of second. Any questions?
Can I just ask, are the specs already put together?
Uh, yes, I've got, um, Ed and I have been going back and most, so, you know, bleeding a little bit. My apologies, um, but we've worked to put together a spec package, but then I understand that there's a little bit more information that needs to be added to it before it goes out to bid, so, um, I'll, we're, as a recommendation on that.
Great. Okay, good motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I. Opposed. Motion carried. Anyone else?
Nope, that's it for me.
So, privilege of the floor, public comment, uh, Judge Jim Fasso.
Thank you, Mr. Breger.
Lord Gertrude.
Uh, what I'm here for today is something I'm not happy about. I'm the president of Riverdale Cemetery. Uh, our cemetery is a non-profit cemetery in the Town of Lewiston area. Uh, I came to, uh, the board, uh, a couple of years ago, we talked about needing help to keep the cemetery going. The problem is today that, uh, and I hate to say it, well, there's people are not burying the people in the ground anymore. What they're doing is they're putting them on a, in a bottle, and they put them on their mantle. Um, we make no money on that at all. Remember, we're not the prophet. We're not backed by any church, we're not backed by any corporation, uh, and it's not my fault that it's that way. This was done in, uh, eighteen ninety-six. Um, they owned all that property. The state took part of it from us and gave it to, uh, the other cemeteries there, the Catholic cemeteries. And what we have is probably the biggest cemetery in this whole day area. We're not asking the Town of Lewiston for any monetary or any money. What we need from you is some kind of help. You have given us help in the past, um, but we need somebody that will, we, that checks with us every week or can call us, or we can call them and get ahold of them. And we're asking for help fixing lawn mowers. We're asking for help plowing. We're asking for help, uh, keeping the area straight. We don't need you to cut grass. Our people cut grass. Uh, gentleman here, he's kind of board of directors, he cuts grass. I cut grass. But the problem is. of board of directors, he cuts grass, I cut grass, but the problem is this, and the people here doesn't, don't understand this, when we can't function anymore, the state of New York takes it from us, and they're gonna give it to you, totally you. This city, this town will get that cemetery, and it will be on you. It's not, not my loo- my law, it's the state of New York's law, that's how it works. I don't want that to happen. He doesn't want it to happen. Our board, we used to have fourteen on the board, we're down to six, and all the older people, and five people passed away, we don't have it. You can't get younger people on a board. It doesn't matter how many people you have on a board, it's how you can function. We have bills, uh, we keep up with them, it's very hard, uh, when you have to pay four people to maintain the place, um, and sometimes it just doesn't get done, so we have to chip in the help. What I need, what cemetery needs, is, so if I call you on the phone and say, look, I got a lawn mower that's broke, can you guys come down and pick it up and fix it for us? That's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for, uh, some maintenance help, I'm, I'm asking for, when you have a truck that you get rid of, that you're gonna get rid of, send it to the cemetery, we'll fix it up and use it, okay? I do not want you to get this. The way things are going is very close to happening, and I don't want it to, um, so I don't know what to ask for.
Judge, have we done that in the past?
Yes, yes, we have.
So you're just looking for a continuation of what we've done in the past?
Here, here's our problem. I'm not pointing fingers. Girl would call and get ahold of somebody, and never get a, get a message, leave a message, if you leave a message, no one called back. We get ahold of them, and they'd say, okay, we'll be over there, and they don't show up. I need somebody that I can call up and say, I need your help tomorrow.
Yes, that's our new, that's, that's your guy.
To that, and that's what I'm asking for.
So there he is.
Okay. You, you as a board have to say to him-
No, he, he's an elected official, and he's the guy.
No, all I'm saying is, when, when we need something and he's setting up, go come and do it, that he knows that you're okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Got it?
I'll give you my personal sound.
Now, I guess you have one of our lawn mowers now.
Guess you do, yeah, guess we do, and guess what? We have a problem with it, we send it back, you guys fix it, everything.
He's got his whole family working, I will vouch for that.
That's what I'll do, because I'm-
I guess it's, I guess it's called work when you're not getting paid, right?
All I need to do from you guys is this, help me so I can help you not get the cemetery. I don't want you to stay here, I really don't.
The members here on the board that have attended the conference in New York City, I know John has, I know Rob has, I don't know what Sarah has, and I don't know what Jason has, but we've all attended an hour-long session on cemeteries.
Yeah.
And you're not a liar. I'm not, yeah, so it's true, that it, and it's not just here, it's all across New York State.
Oh, yeah.
We get it, so, and that's why we've helped in the past, so it's, it is kind of troublesome that you haven't been getting that help when you asked for it, so.
Right, and you know, there's, there's other towns that are having the same problem, and, and I can enable you, but they, what they've done is said, look, we, we might not be able to do that, but we'll give you, we'll get, every year we'll give you thirty-five dollars, or we'll give you fifty dollars. I don't want your money. I want your help, that's what I want, I want to be a team. I can call somebody and I can get somebody to come over and say, okay, let's do this. That's all I ask.
Judge, I'll make you a list of the council people, but I'll give it to Kathy and, like, Mike from Highway and Jeff from Sewer, we discussed the water lines, they're not doable, they're not up needs, but they're all broken, a hundred years old, it's just not feasible. So people have become in a building, I think the cemetery next door, same thing, their, their water lines are all shut, there's not water.
Gate, Gate of Heaven Cemetery, they, they don't have it now either, like, two weeks ago, their water line-
Their lines are all, they freeze in this great-
Believe me when I tell you, I was gonna fix them, I fixed them, three times we fixed them. They had a plumber, he said, okay, we need replacement oil. Yeah, okay, seven hundred thousand dollars to replace all the water lines in the cemetery, because there's miles of them, it's pretty tough to do.
And Mike, we give them millions, um, I don't know if you need any this year.
We got millions from you. Okay. Stuff like, me and you will talk.
Sure. I'll give you all the-
I'm not gonna ask you for nothing that you can't.
It's about the C cap.
You had to, you didn't want to see some?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. Rich, John, I, I, John, I know you, it's good to see you again, Rob, thanks for your help. Uh, I was actually recruited to be on the board about eight years ago, I was asked to transfer, while I transferred grade for our antithesis Lewiston, I saw a judge in the back, he's very dedicated, he said, Rich, what are you doing here? I said, well, I'm here to transfer grade, but the question is, what are you doing in the back office there? He says, well, I happen to be the president of the Riverdale Cemetery Association, and guess what? I need a board member, you're in. Um, my wife and I did move to Sarasota, Florida, I'm here for five months, and I tried to reside from the board, but I promised Judge that I would help for the five months that I'm here, and he's absolutely right, we lost Bobby D. Francesco, we, we lost five quality board members in the last two years. Don King, uh, he's unable to attack, we cannot recruit younger people, it's like the fire department, we're talking about the fire department. Um, I'll be on record to say, and I'm not really a full-time board member, but the writing's on the wall, I mean, our revenue stream is extremely low right now, we hired four people to cut the grass, to maintain, uh, we've gone from sixty-five thousand, we're down to forty-two thousand dollars, and like Judge mentioned, we've made many calls without returned telephone calls, so if we don't get the help, and it's sad to say, and I know Judge is gonna be eighty-four years old, October fifth, and I want to wish him happy birthday here, but the writing's on the wall, he's not gonna be here for too much longer as far as the present, so we do need help, we need help drastically, we don't have the funds that we had previously, so, um, and it's great to see we have new blood here in the highway department, because you did pave roads, you gave us milling to pave roads, which was extremely helpful, uh, and that was about two or three years ago, correct? And then that kind of dropped by the wayside. Plowing did not happen last year, okay? Um, so I guess I'm saying, if we don't get the help, unfortunately, it will be turned over, and I know you don't want that, we don't want that, so any help you can give us would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. Back to you, Judge. Okay, so that, um, I'm gonna read the upcoming board commission meetings before we go into executive session again, it's on personnel matter, there'll be no action taken, um, the historic preservation board-
We will read-
September ninth at five forty-five P M. Zoning board, September eleventh at six P M. Planning board, September eighteenth at six thirty P M. And the town board meeting on September twenty-second, six P M. I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion?
Okay. All in favor? Aye, aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you very much.